Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from it. The Lord is the King of power and glory, and of all. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We will move to item D, the approval of minutes from the May 20th, 2024 regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, those minutes shall stand approved. They will stand approved. Item E, citizen communication. If there is anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address council, please feel free to come forward. If you would, please just state your name and address. We also ask that you complete that sheet that's on that.
It's Grace Smalley. My address is 352 East Main.
What can we do for you?
I have questions and concerns of the area around my property. There is a tree that is in between the road and the sidewalk. It's buckling up the sidewalk. It's starting to buckle up the sidewalk where I park. It also loses little leaves that actually get into my cabin air filter on my vehicles. It also drops other debris. I have recently had a decent sized branch that was longer than my Silverado. And I am unable to cut it up myself and remove it. Now, I don't know if it fell in the road and somebody put it in my front yard, or if it just happened to be placed real nicely right there. I am just wondering what I can have done with it.
Absolutely. Andy, can I have you?
It's certainly something we can have our engineering team take a look at. So I will mention it at staff meeting tomorrow, and we will have somebody contact you in order to come out and take a look at.
Okay. Because my other concern is I parked my two vehicles there, and there's parking on my side of the road. So if one of those branches would have happened to have fallen on one of those vehicles, who would have been responsible for this? Would it be me, the homeowner? Or would it have been a city issue? Because it was, like I said, in the vicinity which is deemed city property.
Yeah, I certainly can't answer at this point without seeing the whole situation.
Okay. If I could ask another question?
Sure.
When that road was being upgraded and having a curb put in and everything, I was informed when I talked to the person in charge that it was two parking spots per residence. That was a duplex. There was two residents there. I still continue to have two electric meters and two gas meters for this house. I only got two parking spots at all. So if I, would it be, would I be able to have another spot put in? Because I do also ride a motorcycle. And I would prefer to have it in the parking spot because right now I have to leave it on the sidewalk when I go in and out. And because the pipes and everything are hot with my grandchildren and that, I would prefer to have that third, at least third spot up there.
Certainly things we can take back to the engineering department.
Yeah, I'll bring it up tomorrow on my staff meeting. Certainly make no promises is what can or will happen. But I will promise you that somebody will contact you and at least discuss with you and see what direction, if anything, we can do for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time and for coming. Did you say your name was Grace?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Grace, did you complete that Form Two with your contact information? I believe there's a spot on there for that, too.
I just put my name and my address in there.
If you would, and maybe Kevin can get that.
What's your phone?
For council, we will move to item F, reports from council committees. F1, the Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on May 20th, 2024. It seems to lack the mention of items. The Safety and Resources Committee did meet on May 28th, 2024. And Jordan?
Well, it's not present, but I hear that they discussed EMS costs and revenues.
Perfect, thank you, sir. F3, the Technology Communications Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. And F4, the Water Sewer Refuse and Recycling Committee met earlier this evening. And what's your?
For the full heat water contract.
Thank you, sir. Item H, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. H1, ordinance number 017-24, an ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of a water purchase contract between the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and the Village of Holgate, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is currently tabled. If we could have a motion in the second to go on table.
Those should be on table.
Michael, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
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 Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Yes, Council President. As discussed at the last meeting, Holgate had yet to have their council review the contract. And I was informed last Wednesday morning by the village administrator that they had need reviewed the contract and approved a resolution authorizing the contract with the city of Holgate. And at that time, it made me realize when she contacted me that I had not taken into the Board of Public Affairs or the Water Sewer Subcommittee. So I apologize for my oversight, which is why we called a special meeting this evening to have them review it. With that said, it is very much the same water contract as we had with Florida and Melinta. I use that as a baseline. The only major changes or differences, it is a 30-year contract, but I also allowed them a 25-year opt-out. Within six months' notice, they can opt out of the contract in 25 years. What that does is it gets us through the debt service on our water treatment plan. So in 2049, that's paid off, or the improvements to that are paid off. So it will help us get through that time. The 30 years was added or put in just because so many times federal loans, grants, et cetera, require a 30-year contract. So that's where we started with 30 years, and then I threw out the 25-year opt-out, and they appreciated that. The price per gallon is exactly the same as we are currently providing Melinta and Florida. So that is the same. There are basically three dates on this contract that I penned in. There's a contract date, which is the date that both parties, myself and their mayor and our village administrator signed the contract. The in-service date is basically the date the water starts to flow through the meter. The reason we put that in is because they questioned this provision. It says whereas minimum charges, they must purchase 30,000 gallons minimum per month. Well, they currently, or they anticipate purchasing 67,000 gallons a day. So 30,000 is a carryover from contracts in the past. It's really irrelevant because they will far exceed that by 67 times every month. But I did leave that in the contract to make it same saying with the other two contracts. After the in-service date, there is an effective date. And what that indicates is the date, at least once the water starts flowing, the effective date becomes the date 25 years or 30 years also begins. So once that, once we hit that, sign off on the, after the water starts flowing, that becomes the date which the clock starts. So other than that, the one item that they did strike from the contract, and I agreed to, they had the water would be furnished at a reasonably constant pressure calculated no less than 35 pounds per square inch from an existing 12-inch main supply near the intersection of West Longley Avenue and Henry County Road 14. That is yet to be determined. That's not cast in stone, that location. So they asked that we strike that from the contract. Will it likely be there? Yes. Is there 100% guarantee that it'll be there? No. So they asked that we just struck that location from the contract, which I agreed to. It doesn't change anything else in the contract. It just strikes the location of the meter pit and where the meter is. Other than that, that's pretty much, those are pretty much the differences between this contract and previous contracts with Florida and Melinta. This addendum A on the contract is basically, once the water starts flowing, we signed it, and the effective date is established for the, starting at the 25 or 30 year clock.
Andy, I did have a question. Would it behoove us at odds to have any known later that date on that in-service range?
I don't know that we can push the process. I mean, it's all completely dependent on the federal government getting their grant monies to them. I know they're acting with the village. They're under findings and orders of the EPA. So they are acting as quickly as they possibly can in order to make this happen because they're getting pushed from Columbus. So I don't know if it does us any good or if there's any advantage to us saying, okay, you gotta do about this thing. It's really up in the air. I mean, it could be 18 months, it could be 60 months. I just don't know. And I don't know that anybody does. But I do know that they're acting as quickly as possible to try and get things rolling.
The other questions or discussion from council?
Very excited that we have this opportunity. Grateful for the Village of Holgate to agree. Yeah, just looking forward to the opportunity to service the village. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll take a roll call from Michaela, please.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Thank you, Michaela. That'll move to second reading. Item I, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 016-24, a resolution extending the provisions contained in resolution number 057-23 wherein council imposed an immediate moratorium on the issuance and processing of permits along retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of adult-use marijuana within the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring that emergency.
Motion. Second.
Andy?
Yes, Council President. This, once again, was set, our moratorium was set to expire July 31st, 2024. What this legislation does is puts it out until December 31st just to allow more time for things to solidify in Columbus in terms of what's going to happen with this, with their bills down there related to this. No other, there are no changes.
Questions or comments from council? I'm hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to third reading. Item J, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. There aren't none this evening. Item K, good of the city. K1, discussion or action to transfer 7.71 acres on Commerce Drive owned by the city to the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County. Andy, I'll turn it over to you on that one.
Okay, Council President. This was, this was one of the five properties that I pointed out in the last municipal properties subcommittee meeting that we had. And one that I mentioned that I had a party interested in. They're interested in a portion, a portion of this parcel. And you can see here, this is Commerce Drive out here where it connects with Riverview. It's a large triangular parcel. They're interested in just 475 foot of drainage or approximately 2 and 3/4 acres for their property. The cleanest and best way to do this is to allow this property to get passed off to the Community Improvement Corporation for them to make this sale or transfer. There's two things about this property that I brought to the attention of the people that are interested in it. One is it's part, it's a CORF property, C-O-R-F, which stands for Clean Ohio Revitalization Fund. So there are reporting requirements on that parcel that stay with the property. So every year, you just basically sign off, nothing changed, or yes, we did this, or what have you. It's something that I've signed off on twice. And obviously, nothing has changed since I've been in this position. So it's paid work that follows this property, and that's one of two items. The second item is there is an Eagles Nest located within 660 feet of this property, which happens to be kind of the magical number. And depending on what your development is, the higher you go, the more impactful it is to that Eagles Nest, and the more difficulty you will have in developing that parcel. This particular development is going to, not going to have any sort of high-rise structure. It's going to primarily be a storage lot for a company that is in the process, or they've moved down to Holgate. They have a building in Holgate, and they've moved from Hastings, Michigan. And they're currently in the Holgate Industrial Park. They're depending on staying there. They're growing. They just need more space. This company is in the business of moving oversized loads, dismantling buildings and factories, storing and selling industrial equipment, site preparation, moving and reassembling industrial buildings, and stabilizing repairing foundations. What they want to use this for is basically storing some of their heavy equipment. So it will basically be a lot, so there are no higher structures. Again, I've made them aware of it being, there being an Eagles Nest adjacent to the property, and also that it is part of the CORF. They're still very interested in the property. And we'd like to move forward with this as soon as possible. So I would like it to go, or have the law director draft the appropriate legislation to transfer this property to the CIC so that they can move forward with the sale of the property.
Thank you, Andy. Is there a motion to direct the law director to draft the appropriate legislation? So move. Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Item K2, discussion or action to remain in the Longley Valley East Chipped Consortium in order to submit an application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for chip funds for program year 2024. Andy?
Yes, Council President. CHIP is a community housing improvement program. Napoleon has been involved in this for many, many years. I know the last time we signed the contract, a member of this consortium was a couple of years ago. The contract is up again for renewal. It involves the City of Wausau, Fulton County, Henry County, and the City of Napoleon. And it just makes sense from a logistical standpoint to combine the entities to acquire the funding. It allows for more flexibility with the funding, et cetera, when we go together and to get these funds. Longley Valley Planning administers this program. So there's really, and it's a pass-through. Any money that comes in basically goes out for low to moderate income homes that need repaired or revitalized. So I just ask that we request the law director to draft the appropriate legislation that will allow me to have signed the agreement and continue our participation in that consortium.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Tom, second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Item K3, discussion or action to accept a $1,500 donation from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, number 4428, for Napoleon Police Department Community Outreach Programs. Andy, I'll turn it over to you on this one, too.
You didn't want to tackle this, did you? Chief Legg made me aware of this donation last week. It is for basically the summer programs that run for our youth. I know Officer Strickland's been very, very involved in those. And he's done a phenomenal job. The Eagles have made donations in the past, and they have made a donation again this year to help with those programs. It's a tremendous help for us. I just ask that we approve that donation.
Is there a motion to accept? So move. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Thank you to the Eagles for that donation. My kids especially appreciate those summer programs. So goes to good use, for sure. Item K4, discussion or action, review of water and sewer rules, specifically Rule 5, special services in Rule 32 fees. Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, this actually came up last summer. And we got busy with other things and kind of overlooked it. Now, operations has brought it to my attention again. And it is basically what we charge for the use of our hydrant meters and water meters, or hose meters during the summer months primarily. They want to review the costs and other things associated with that program. So we would like to look into that and have the Water and Sewer Committee and the Board of Public Affairs review that with us next Monday night.
Mr. Page, will be okay to submit to committee? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item K5, discussion or action, April 2024, replacement pages for the codified ordinances of Napoleon. Billy, are you or Andy on that?
I'll take this.
Okay.
Billy gets talking and he can't stop. I hope the other chance to review all 192 pages, but this is our semi-annual update by Walder Grain of the codified ordinances. It's basically an update of the big, large codified ordinance books or everything that's online for regular ordinances. They follow through with that update every single month. And we just ask that you direct the law director to draft the appropriate legislation accepting these changes.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Item L, we will go around the table. Kevin, I'm going to start on your side this evening.
Okay, thank you. I just had one item. So we just received our final retained portion for going with Rita. And we were quite pleased with what we ended up having to pay. And this is for 2023 collection. We collected over $6 million worth of income taxes last year, 2023. And Rita takes out a 3% retainees fee. Once they calculate all their expenses and with all the other 200-plus entities that are in Rita, then they re, they give back or they recharge more. And we were under 1%. So we were below $55,000 in collection fees for over $6 million. You know, we've never, through attrition, we've had retirements, and our staff has gotten smaller too on the finance side, and we've become more efficient. But I don't think I could hire somebody full-time to collect $6 million for that price. So I decided to bring that to council. You know, the decision back in 2021, 2022 to go to Rita, this is, you know, a pretty solid move for us. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Tom? Good, thank you. Dr. Day? Good. Brittany?
I just wanted to say thanks to PD, Fire EMS for the sendouts with the track team and baseball team. It was great to see the community come out, support all the athletes. I was excited. Thank you.
Mr. Merrick?
I have nothing to add.
I have a question for the legal department. With the ruling about the school, the old high school, how can a CCHC keep scheduling events in there when they're not supposed to be there?
So we can talk about that in executive session if you like. We can talk about it in your case.
Okay.
We'll do that in that segment.
Sounds good. Anything else? Mr. Watts?
Jordan, nothing to add. Nothing to add.
Wow, please, we all got the time. I received, we received word Friday that we were awarded grant funding for the East Washington Street project. And this is for the Ohio Builds Program, which is a water and wastewater infrastructure grant program, which is part of the article funding that the state received. They're doubling this out to communities. This is an $825,000 grant that we received. And this is over and above the monies that Chad has talked about in the past for that project. As you recall, and he's talked about the $325,000 Public Works Commission monies, and he's talked about $500,000 that we're going for as far as the CDVG that we discussed just recently. With this, conception of this grant, which I'm not asking anything from you this evening, I'm just providing you with information because the press release will be out very soon. Longley Valley Planning Organization has recommended that we back off on what we are requesting from the CBD monies from $500,000 down to $225,000. They feel like there's a very high likelihood that we will get rejected at the $500,000 level. But we are far more likely at the lower level to get funding. So we feel like it's worth it to come back on our request and be more likely to get the funding. But it was very good news that we received Friday for that project. Just wanted to provide you that, like I said, that the press releases might be issued. If it hasn't been received already, it hasn't been received. So it's very good news.
I think you have one more item when you're around the table.
I do. You do. You received a donation this afternoon from the Gluckel Insurance Company, which is formerly Smithers Insurance. And it's grain, grain rescue equipment. Chief, would you like to speak to it a little bit?
Yeah, I was contacted via phone today by Janine Furrha, I guess is her name. But she runs the Gluckel Insurance Agency up here at 540 North Perry. And it was an unsolicited donation. They're going to provide us with a grain evacuation auger, which will go down inside the tube. That runs off a battery-powered drill. They're providing us with the auger, the drill, and then platforms that we can walk through grain around there so we don't sink into it. It's kind of totaled right around $1,800 worth of equipment that we don't have to, we don't have to purchase, and it upgrades now. Currently, we have a pneumatic one that runs off air cylinders, which is a limited quantity. But since we've moved so much to battery-powered equipment and our rescue side of things, this works right along with that. So very, very welcome donation from them. And we'll be taking delivery of that with your approval on Wednesday afternoon.
Is there a motion to accept that donation? So move. Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. And I just ask for a brief executive session this evening. Nothing for me. We will request a motion to go into executive session for matters of a competitive nature relating to a city-owned or operating utility and an additional executive session for pending or imminent litigation, please.
No motion.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes. Yes. Right. Can we have a motion come out of the executive session for matters of a competitive nature relating to a city-owned or operating utility and for pending an imminent litigation, please?
No motion.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany? Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes, Council President. I would like to ask if the review of Campbell's contract for the treatment of their wastewater for the treatment of their wastewater be sent to the Board of Public Affairs and the Water Sewer Subcommittee for next Monday evening.
Mr. Chairman? Move exactly. And no, actually take it in the executive session. Item N, Approved Payment of Bills. Any actions, any objections, or corrections? Payment of Bills shall stand approved. Hearing that, they have stayed approved. Is there a motion for adjournment?
No motion.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Uh...
Yes.
Yes.
Uh...
Yes.
Dr. Day?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.